Well called over the November fifteenth regular meeting of the Mounds View School Board. Good evening and welcome. Our first order of business is adoption of the agenda, item 1.2. It entertain a motion.
So moved. Second?
Has been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We moved out of 2.1 student recognition fall activities and Colin's gonna tee us up.
Our activities directors could not be here tonight.
Tonight they're at the first co-op girls hockey game. Wanted to be there and so they send their best. So tonight what we're gonna do is just have our Irondale students that will be recognized come up first and then following that we'll have Mounds View.
Excellent.
Hi, I'm Elle Young. I am one of the senior captains for Irondale Girls Soccer and this year, as many of our past years, we haven't had a particularly winning season, but one of the big things about our team is how well everyone gets along. Like I have never seen any fights on our team and that was true of this past season as well. One also really big thing about our season is for the first time in four years, we were able to have four, or three teams, sorry. For the past three years, we've only had two. So we got enough girls to be able to form three of our teams. Another cool thing that was just started this year is we have an all-female coaching staff, which I think is really important, especially to our younger girls who are just starting to learn soccer as they're like growing through high school. It's really important to have women leading them. And then we also have improved from last year to this year. We did have more wins and our team, a lot of times in games, was working together better. So I think this past season was really a starting point of growth for the future for Irondale Girls Soccer. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Ava O'Rourke. I am a senior this year and I'm in Irondale Drama. And the show we did this fall was The Addams Family Musical. It's a comedy show based on the TV show from the sixties, The Addams Family. It was a super fun show. We sold a lot of tickets every night. I looked out at the audience and almost all the seats were full. It was awesome. There were some cool technical things that we got to work on this year with this show. So we got to really experiment with the lighting. We used a lot of spot experiments. There's a scene where there's a spot on one of our main characters and all the lights go down. That was really cool to see. And another scene where we had a storm, so we had like the fog machines and the thunder sound effects and we got to use the LED lights like flashing for lightning. It was really cool, just for the audience to be able to experience that as well. And then we also got to have a big set this year. We have enough room on stage now where we had the whole Addams Family house and we can, we had stairs that we could walk up. So we got to play a few scenes up on top of that house, which was also really, really cool to see. So going into this winter, Irondale is starting our competition, one act, where we're gonna compete against other schools in the section. We're starting our children's show rehearsals start this week. The cast list just came out. It's Flat Stanley this year. So shows are beginning of January. And then later in the winter, we'll start our one-act showcase, which is a student-run experience. It's a little more intimate than our musical. The audience gets to sit on stage and just really be face-to-face with us. So that'll be great and a great next season for drama. Thank you.
Thank you.
Couple of us had PTSD from Flat Stanley.
I was gonna...
It'll be a great show. Anybody else from Irondale? Alright, awesome. Thank you very much for being here tonight.
Hi, I'm Taylor Isabel.
And I'm Aubrey Klein.
And we are senior captains for Mounds View Girls Soccer, or not soccer, cross-country.
We don't play soccer, to be very clear.
So cross-country had one of our most successful seasons to date. We came away with both varsity and JV championships in conference with our JV placing first through eighth place in the race, which is an accomplishment that I don't think has ever been done in our conference meet. And then we also won a section title and we placed third in the state meet, which is the first time we've podiumed since 1995. And then we've capped off our season this past weekend at Nike Cross Regionals where we placed seventh amongst like hundreds of teams from the Midwest.
Yeah, and we attribute this success to, first of all, our coaches Jimmy, Diane, and Ingrid and our team as a whole. We've done, we've tried to do a lot more like team bonding this year. So like getting to know all the girls doesn't matter like their times or anything and we believe that like our success comes as a team, not just as individuals. So yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations on a great year.
Hello, I am Cora Manuret, a senior and a crew captain. And this is...
Hello, I'm Anya. I'm a junior and I'm the student director.
We are here representing Mounds View, Mounds View Theater Drama Department. And we just finished our fall play Almost Maine. It was a story about a lot of little love scenes, like a full love story in a very small town. Our show was very well received. We had over like a hundred attendees over the show weekend. And this week we are very excited because we are starting our student-led Shakespeare production. This year we are doing King Lear with a theme of Twisted Fairy Tale. And the performances will be over the first two weekends of February. We hope to see you there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm JC.
Hi, I'm Victor.
I'm Canton.
This season, we started off the first week of training going to a camp in Whitewater Regional Park. And then we had our first race at the Griac where it wasn't really successful. We got tenth. And then we had a meet at Alexandria where we bounced back. We got second just behind Stillwater and our JV got second just behind Edina.
And then after that, we raced at conference and Stillwater beat us again, just like at Alex, unfortunately. But at sections, we, well Stillwater's not in our section, so we didn't have to compete against them. Sections, we won for the sixth year in a row and our JV ran, almost ran a perfect score. So that was pretty great. State, we finally beat Stillwater and jumped two places in our rankings from fifth to seventh.
Alright.
Alright.
And yeah, we capped out the season at NXR. We raced in the championship race and placed 12th as a team.
So unlike a lot of our previous years, this year wasn't super successful as a program performance-wise, but like all years, we learned a lot of things. As JC was talking about, beating Stillwater at the state meet, that's always good. And coming back from losing to them a few times is always something, something we like to see. It kinda showed that we're resilient as a team and yeah.
Thank you. Congratulations. Is that rounded out, Colin?
Should we see what's up with the seniors for next year's plans?
Absolutely. Plan is still early in the year, but if you've got plans for next year, we'd love to hear them.
Alright, so next year I am planning to go into a three-plus-three combined undergrad and graduate program for physical therapy. I don't know where yet, but that's definitely what I'm going into.
Next year I'm planning to go into a nursing program somewhere. I've applied to a few schools, so still deciding, but nursing for sure.
Next year I will hopefully be attending St. Olaf and running track and field there.
But not the soccer team?
Not the soccer team.
I am signed with the University of Minnesota to run track and cross-country, not soccer. And I'll be studying biomedical engineering.
Next year I'm thinking about attending UMD and continuing to study technical theater and hopefully a bachelor in fine arts.
Hopefully I'll be able to go to college next year. I wanna start my undergraduate degree in mechanical engineering and hopefully walk onto a track or cross-country team.
I would like to study nursing and I'm talking to coaches as to where I'll be going attending this year, next year.
Yeah, I'm looking to go to college. Probably somewhere in Wisconsin. I've looked at a couple of campuses and I really like UW Lacrosse and it'd be awesome to run there. My dad ran there, so that'd be really cool.
I don't know if we've ever had an entire group of recognition that are all seniors. So we're gonna lose like all of this talent next year.
One junior.
One junior. That's awesome. Well, congratulations on a great fall season. Thank you for making time to come out here. I'm sure it was top of your list. We do love to hear about all of your successes and how things are going. Enjoy the rest of the year and I'll look to see somebody in the spring. Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
We are gonna move on to item 2.2, student representative reports. We'll start with Irondale. I believe we have Ella and Angelica here this evening. Do you have us the rundown?
Oh, hello again. My name is Angelica and we are both co-presidents of student council. So just kind of like a recap of the past month for student council and Irondale as a whole. Our main goal was community involvement, following homecoming especially. And our students really wanted to connect to the community more, especially when looking at the feature nights and little kids are gonna be going to Irondale. So we wanted to share two events with you that we were able to do the past month. So our first event was trunk-or-treat in which many clubs and sports participated in decorating a car, giving out candy, and basically conversing and kind of playing with the kids. This was such an incredible experience to see all of the kids just so excited about the sports and activities that they are going to be able to kinda do once they get to Irondale. And we received so much wonderful feedback from the parents and it was just really exciting to see what it's, or it was just really exciting to see essentially.
And then our second event was one that we put on annually called trick-or-canning in which we involved more community members and we collected canned food, monetary donations and the like for Ralph Reader Food Shelf. And today we went and donated what we collected and we had over 730 pounds of food and we had over $100 in donations. So that was really cool to see. So overall, this month was a great success. We were able to help the community and we're looking forward to doing more of that in December and future months. And we are looking to do more service projects or community bonding in student council specifically and involving our school in those kind of community projects. So yes, that's what we had.
Thank you very much. Great update.
My kids are very excited when the girl from the play came to our house asking for food, so.
Did she give them everything in the pantry?
They were like, "Take what you want", like.
Just kiss her out of her mouth.
Can we come with you too?
I believe we have Alton from Mounds View High School. Welcome.
Hi, good evening everyone. My name is Alton and I'm a junior at Mounds View, the new student representative, so this is all new to me. And I'm very excited to deliver this month's report. So in terms of athletics, Aubrey and Taylor and the cross-country boys, they already went over how we got third at state for girls and boys got fifth at state. Overall, they had a pretty good season. Speaking of third at state, girls soccer also got third at state and are pretty proud of that. They did lose to Edina for the semifinal. However, there was a great turnout at the US Bank Stadium, a lot of support from our students. And in terms of football and volleyball, big upset wins in the playoffs. However, again, overall, great season. Football did lose their last game against Shakopee. However, again, great students turned out in support for our football team. Girls tennis, they won sections and they also got fifth in state, so pretty proud of them too. And some athletes to recognize, Jessica E., she signed to UMD for soccer. Lauren M. to Minnesota State McAdoo for soccer as well. Elliot MacArthur to North Carolina State for cross-country and track. Taylor Isabel, who was just here for UVM for cross-country and track as well. And Jack H. to Southeastern Iowa for baseball. In terms of drama, as you saw earlier, Anya and, shoot, Anya and her friend, they were here to talk about Almost Maine, which is the play again. They said how there was a great turnout. It was a great play, Oscar-winning performances, I would say. And for the winter, they are putting on, like they said, the Shakespeare play. So excited to see that. Can't wait for the great performances they're gonna put. Some other stuff, parking lot, did complete our north parking lot for Mounds View and I guess more parking space, pretty good. I don't drive, but for our drivers, I would say it's a good thing for them. And 10th graders, they recently took the ACT and best of luck to all of them. Some student council-related material, we had some, we had a fall conference. So basically, we hosted it at Mounds View where student councils from different schools kinda gathered. We shared ideas, spent time with each other and Irondale was there as well. And we also had a leadership retreat where student council members went to a retreat up north. Again, kinda the same thing, sharing ideas, getting to know other student council members. And we also had, this coming week, we have female struggling children as volunteer opportunities and we have parent coming up, which we're also helping with. And overall, that's, it's been a great month for athletics, for drama, and just Mounds View girl. And again, thank you so much for having us.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here tonight. We appreciate it. We'll move to item 2.3 announcements. Ask Shawna to acknowledge the gifts.
Alright, thank you. There were three gifts for schools and programs received this period for a total of $2,500. And there were 13 gifts received for the Ralph Reader Food Shop this period for a total of $34,660. It is recommended that the board accept these gifts and extend our thanks to the donors.
That's great. Thank you. Additional announcements, upcoming meeting dates, Thursday, December 1st, 5:00 PM, a work session, and Tuesday, December 6th, 7:00 PM, irregular meeting of the board, both here at the district center. Moved item 3.0, approval of the consent agenda. I entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Has been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Moved item 4.1, quarterly budget amendments. Welcome Bernice. Good to see you. Chris is gonna do his report after this.
Oh, okay.
I'd like to skip Chris's report.
Okay.
He usually kicks me under the table. I heard from him earlier. Carry on.
I'm here to address the budget amendment, quarterly budget amendment. This is normal business. And so each quarter, the district reviews budget variances and makes adjustments as additional information becomes available. This adjustment is for 121,795.54. It increases general fund revenues and expenses and it's for the building-generated activity. It is recommended that the school board approve the budget amendment.
Any questions for Bernice on the adjustment? Hearing none. I would entertain a motion to approve the amendment as presented.
Will still approve.
Second?
It has been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. We're gonna move back up to item 2.4 and for the record, I did not cross it off on my sheet. I just skipped over it.
Skipped over it. No problem at all. We did have a few things. So good news. It's always great when we get the students here and be able to recognize all the wonderful things happening. Couple other things I did wanna note. So the National Alliance for Concurrent Enrollment Partnerships, NASIP is their acronym, held their annual conference in Minneapolis last week. And as part of the conference, Mounds View Public Schools got highlighted. So we had an opportunity to host some folks that were visiting from across the country, show off a little bit for our early college program as well as our partnership with Anoka Ramsey. And we hosted the event at Irondale, but again, both schools are involved in that program and have access. But it was so fun to watch all of the visitors come in, see the new facilities, be able to host them, and talk about the partnership we've established with Anoka Ramsey. And one of the takeaways, the reason I wanted to highlight that is that sometimes we take for granted programs we have. It's just, well, it's just what we do in Mounds View Public Schools. But as we had the opportunity to answer questions and share about our program, it came very clear about the quality of the program and the strength of partnership that we've established with Anoka Ramsey, all the opportunities we've afforded our students at both of our high schools. So I just wanted to highlight that, the recognition that's there. Again, happy that we're not taking that for granted, but continuing to celebrate that outstanding program and the valuable opportunities that, you know, provides our students and our families. I also wanted to share a couple of district communication updates. First, the latest edition of our school talk will be arriving in residents' mailboxes next week. So a great publication that comes out. The feature edition is about our efforts in career and college. You know, that's a DOP goal for us this year as well, so it'll be nice to share more with the community about what's happening there. And the second communication going out is the Winter and Spring Community Education Catalog. That publication also is being sent out to residents. It will include all of the upcoming offerings for youth, adult, and families. And registration for those courses opens in early December. We certainly want to encourage all residents to give that a look. We think there's all kinds of outstanding opportunities available for them. So with that, I will end my report.
Just worth the wait.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. We'll move to item 5.1, everybody's favorite topic, policy review.
That is correct. So we tonight are, as part of the board's ongoing policy work, are bringing you the 4,000 series of the ends and goals policies. There are seven policies in that complete series. And at our last work session on November 10th, we had a chance to read through all of those and talk about them. There was one recommendation for revision and that is policy EG 4102, Student Representation at School Board Meetings. The recommended change here is to expand the language as our high schools, as you saw with Irondale, actually has co-presidents. So often, you know, the schools would identify one representative to come. We wanna make sure the language is broad enough and expansive enough to allow for two pairs, groups of students to be able to come to give those reports as appropriate moving forward. So we are making that language correction and we will make that revision to the updated policy. Other than that, there were no additional revisions to any of the other policies in that 4,000 series. Tonight really is the first reading as we bring that forward and we will be, bring these back at the December 6th meeting for a second reading and it would be at that time that we would ask for your approval of the revised policy BG 4102.
And the other policies will just be marked as reviewed?
All those policies will be marked as reviewed. In fact, that's effective immediately because you've already done that review, but we'll bring the 4102 back in December.
Thank you.
You bet.
Moved on item 6.1, DOP goal update, district operational plan, expanded and enhanced communications. And we will welcome up Colin Sakolowski and Megan McKean. Good evening. Megan, this might be your first time in front of the board formally, so welcome.
Thank you. It's good to be here. Yes, I think it is my first time meeting a lot of you in person. So it's nice to see all of your faces.
As I said earlier tonight to one board member, Megan started with us in January of 2020 and she really enjoyed her first three months working here.
Yes, so.
So.
Got a crash course in public school communications.
One of our goals tonight on the DOP is to expand and enhance communications that highlight important issues, decisions, and positive attributes about Mounds View Public Schools. And so we're gonna do two things tonight. First, we feel that now that our schools have completed construction and we have some wonderful spaces to showcase for student learning, we wanted to showcase this and to do this, we partnered with a virtual tour production company to create interactive 360-degree tours of the high schools. And so Megan tonight is gonna guide you through just a few of the hotspots on each of the high schools tours.
So yes, we started with Irondale and Mounds View to do these virtual tours to see, you know, how they turned out and the reception of them. And the reception has been great. People have really enjoyed them from what we've heard. And so I figure I will kinda walk you through the features of each of the tours. So we have them featured, just for your information, kind of on the homepage of each of our high schools' websites. So you can access it kind of right here on the homepage. It says, you know, explore Irondale with a virtual tour, and there should be a link that pops up here, but it's not showing up.
If you go to the right, it does.
Oh, go to the right. Oh, right, oops. There it goes. Sorry. That's okay. So once you open up the Irondale tour, this is kind of what you see. We have some really nice drone footage that Kraus Anderson was able to capture for us after the renovations were complete. So you get kind of a very nice sweeping view of the exterior of the school, and then if you click here to start exploring, you'll be brought into kind of the tour itself. So the really cool thing about these tours is that when the team comes in to photograph it, they photograph it literally at a 360-degree, like, they use a 360-degree camera to capture, you know, you can go all the way up to the sky, all the way down to the ground, and get truly, you know, a really realistic view of what our schools look like. So all the tours start at the exterior of the building, and then you see these arrows here that will kind of bring you inside. So this isn't a footprint-by-footprint tour of our buildings. We worked with the principals and school staff to kind of identify, is it maybe 10, 10 to 15 spots that were really worthy of kind of showing off? The principals and the staff's kind of maybe favorite parts of the building. What, you know, spaces that look really nice after our renovations and things like that. So, you know, as we know, at Irondale, they've got a beautiful new commons area, so you can kind of, you can either use, you know, your mouse, and this is also mobile-responsive too, so if you're on a phone, you can just kind of like move your finger around. And you can kind of just spin around the entire area, and you'll see these arrow buttons here that you can kind of move around in the tour itself. So you kind of get different views of these common areas. And we have the ability to kind of add these photo galleries, or what we kind of call hotspots of, you know, spots in the school that are interesting, fun, that we think that, you know, visitors would like to see. So this is the Night Grounds Coffee Shop, for instance. So as you kind of move about the school, you know, you can go in, I won't show you every space, but you know, the Irondale's beautiful auditorium is featured. So as you're navigating the tour, you'll see on the left-hand panel here that there's a lot of different options. And if you choose this one up on the left-hand corner, these are all of the spaces that we photographed at Irondale. So, you know, we tried to show a diverse array of spaces, including some of our new ones. So, you know, one I know that Irondale's really proud of is their brand-new fitness center, and you really get to see, I mean, really exactly what it looks like. And then in the corner of each of these spaces, there's a little information button where you can read more about the space. So as a, you know, visitor, a prospective student, or a prospective parent, they can see what our spaces are used for, gives us an opportunity to talk about the great things we're doing in our schools and in the spaces. So, let's see what else, I want to make sure. And so here, you know, you can kind of toggle, you have a lot of different options to toggle through, so you can kind of use these buttons, and it will just take you through every single space in the school. We offer, you know, directions to finding our campus, contacting us, that kind of thing. So it really is an excellent way for us to kind of show off our spaces, I think. And so for...
Maybe as you toggle over to Mounds View?
Yeah.
I'll just put out here that these are going to be promoted by both high schools in welcome communications and presentations to incoming families, incoming freshmen. As you mentioned, they're mobile and desktop-friendly, and they're not intended, as you'll see when we go through Mounds View High School, they're not intended to be, excuse me, linear tours to move you from one spot to another through a school, down a hallway, turn left, and then you're at a space. These are 10 locations, wherever they are in the school, that allows visitors to not have to enter the school, but they can get a sense of what's going on, what the space looks like. And they are also not intended to be a replacement for in-person tours. Both high schools place a premium on welcoming prospective families, visitors, into the building to see the spaces themselves. We're very proud of it, very unusual that with the pandemic, when, you know, we would have been typically doing ribbon-cutting ceremonies for these schools, we couldn't. So this is just another way for somebody to visit a school without having to be there physically.
Yes, so then, as we move over to Mounds View, you know, again, we start at the exterior of the school, and we're using these arrows to go inside. And, you know, we have this beautiful feature of the commons area. And then for the panorama, as we chose for Mounds View, got the auditorium, you know, it's a few new classrooms, and our new activity spaces as well. So, you know, we've got the mat commons featured here, as well as our gymnasium. Just you get really, really sweeping views, and you can see, you know, how large the space is and how great it will be for community events and things like that. And then, you know, of course, another thing Mounds View is really proud of, their new fitness center and weight room. So it kind of has the same functionality as the Irondale tours, you know, you can kind of toggle through all the different options, see, you know, the hotspot that we call the gymnasium calls court, you can see it kind of in... The nice thing about these kind of hotspots is you can use real pictures of the space being in use, so families and students can get an idea of how the space is used, student culture, you know, kids at events and things like that. So I think these are really useful tools to kind of show our community and prospective community members, you know, what we're all about. So we are, and maybe Colin was going to get to this, we are working on them for the rest of the schools as well, because the feedback for these have been so positive. So those are in the works. You know, the next couple of months, we hope to have them up and running, but yeah, we're excited to unveil them, so.
I'll just add, we've all seen, if you're selling a house, the Realtor 360-degree tours. We also know that's not what a lived-in home actually looks like. It's not that tidy and clean. The same goes for these spaces. There was a tremendous amount of work, prep work, on the front end to get these spaces that are lived in, and they should be, and they should be messy, and they should be vibrant, to get them look a little bit less uncluttered. So we really want to thank the teachers, the principals, Chris Pocquette and Todd Hanson and the custodian crew that spent an awful lot of time on each of these spaces, making sure that they were photo-ready. And like you said, you've seen two high schools tonight. The rest of the schools are going to come online in the next couple of months. So there's, it's a pretty big lift by a lot of people, and we want to recognize them.
Colin, I noticed the boiler rooms are not part of the tour.
Well, visual appealing is what we're trying to...
The parking lot at Mounds View should definitely be a...
The new parking lot, yeah.
That's right.
We do have another piece of this goal to go on to, but before we leave the virtual tours, are there any other questions about them?
Yeah, I was just wondering, as it relates to the Welcome Center, if we're going to have, you know, kind of, we have a central Welcome Center here, in addition to one at each building, but what a great way to be able to, you know, use this in the Welcome Center, allow people to have visual tours of all the buildings.
Yes.
Right while they're here. So I was thinking about that, and then I also just was thinking the value of this. You know, so many folks in our community that supported our bond didn't, they don't have kids in our district, but they support our schools because they know how important it is to our community. So I think this is a really nice feature, too, for folks in the community who don't get into our buildings, be able to come in and come in virtually and check it out. So just wanted to make those comments.
Hopefully, our friends at Press Publications, who I know watch our school board meetings, will pick this up and share it with the community through the paper. That'd be great.
There you go.
That would be great. To your first point, Sandra, the Welcome Center will feature an interactive display where you can select the school, take a tour, and move your way to the spaces that you want to see. And, yeah, in your second point about...
The bond.
The bond.
About showing families, I wanted to mention, I have a friend whose mother lives in Texas, and her granddaughter goes to Irondale. She's in Texas, she's never going to get to Irondale. She took a half hour one night and toured through Irondale, and then called the granddaughter, "I saw your gymnasium, I saw your auditorium." And that helped connect her in that way. So people who support the bond, people who don't live here, who have, you know, grandchildren or whatnot, yeah, that's another bonus. So then, the add-on portion of the evening is that, because our goal is to expand and enhance communications that highlight important issues, decisions, and positive attributes about Mounds View Public Schools, one way we're doing this is by continuing this campaign, Did You Know? It's in social media, e-newsletters, website pop-ups, targeted emails in school newsletters, staff net messages, print materials. So we're pushing this out on a weekly basis, and it's to celebrate timely and strategic district-wide facts and brief news items. And so Megan chose just a handful, tend to scroll through tonight.
Yep, so we share one a week in all of the areas that Colin mentioned, but specifically on social media, where we have a combined 34,000 followers across Facebook and Twitter, an additional couple thousand on Instagram. So, you know, this is a place where we can really get these messages out to, you know, mostly, probably mostly, parents, residents of our communities. And, yep, our families love seeing faces on social media, faces of their students, their friends' kids. So they tend to do really well on social media when we have a nice picture of a staff member or a student. Yeah, so.
If you have any suggestions for items that you think are super obvious to us, but the community does not necessarily know or remember, please let us know. This is continuing throughout the school year.
Yep, so we're always looking for additions, yeah, so feel free to let us know.
Awesome. Hey, I did get one suggestion. At a recent PTA meeting that I attended at one of our elementary schools, they had the suggestion to, you know, for parents who have kids at multiple schools, and we have like these really great events calendars that list things, but they said it's really difficult, or can be very challenging, to navigate if you've got children at multiple schools. So they thought it would be really nice to be able to select, right? Like, if you've got three different schools your children attend, select all three schools and be able to see all the activities, kind of where they overlap for the different schools. So that was one, I thought that was just a really great idea. But I got a lot of great feedback from them about the enhancements that you guys have made to the website, and I know I've seen them myself as a parent, so I just want to commend you guys for all the great work you guys are doing. So thank you.
Are there questions? Complaints? No? No, this is great work. And I actually, as I was reading, I was like, I did know that, because I think I've seen this.
Well, good, you're the intended, you're one of the intended audience members, so that's good.
Those who like bite-sized news, right? I love that.
Great, thank you very much for being here tonight.
Thank you.
That'll take us to item 6.2, updates. We'll start with MSDN Legislative, Mr. Demay.
Yes, last Friday, I attended the AMSDA Community Conference, and we discussed important issues like mental health and equity and our relationships with the community. We also had a previous meeting where we dug into a legislative agenda. In January, we will have a new legislature, and public education, as usual, will be one of the top agenda items for the legislature. They will, you know, start in January. We have a lot of new members up there, and so there's a lot of people to educate. We are looking to, of course, you know, get a solid increase on the general education formula per student. We're, last several years, we focused on the special education cross-up subsidy to try to help the district with that. And we're hopeful this year, too, that we can look at some policy things. We've been working for several years to, rather than have the state determine our starting date for the schools, we would like to determine our starting date. Also, the issue of 11th grade testing using the ACT rather than using the state standardized test to report our scores, issues like that, I believe, will get some attention this year. But I think there will be, we're probably looking at the most robust public education agenda that we've had in years. So it'll be a busy time, and we may call on many of you to talk to your friends up there.
Thanks, Jim. Sandra, Northeast Metro 916.
Probably the, you know, the most significant update from 916, I think just a continuation of conversations I've had here around staff shortages at 916, and how that impacts our ability to place our students into some of those, particularly the setting for students with the higher needs. So we've been working collaboratively, and Superintendent Lennox has been very much a part of the work here with other member districts and 916 leadership on how we can think outside of the box and try to figure out ways to work together to figure out how to both hire all the staff that is needed, but also how to, how can we do things if we can't meet all those, the staffing needs? How else can we meet the demands of our district as a member of 916, working collaboratively in creative ways? So I just want to, you know, say that work is ongoing, I'm very pleased with the direction of it. No answers yet, but I know Chris and his team are working hard at that, and I'd say that's the most important thing for us right now with 916. Just a couple other things I just wanted to highlight with 916. They're having a Know the Truth event for all 916 parents, really about educating parents around, you know, kind of current drug use trends in the community, and that is coming up on November 18th. So that is a great event with 916, and that is done with support of a grant through a coalition run out of Ramsey County. And then another event that I know I've mentioned to all of you as well is the I Love You Guys Foundation Standard Response Protocol training that 916 is doing, and have invited all the member districts. I know I will be there along with a few folks from Mounds View schools, and that is coming up the end of November, November 29th. But that is all about ensuring district personnel and first responders have kind of some standard training around emergency response. So that wraps up for my report for 916.
Thank you. Move to item 7.1, School Board Member Reports. Does anybody have anything to share?
I just wanted to note, as I was coming here today, there was a story in the local news around the really increased need around our community food banks, food pantries, food shelves. And then as I was reviewing the gifts today on our report, I just wanted to call out, I know our faith community has really stepped up. I know my church at Incarnation and St. Odilia in particular, I've noted a couple really significant contributions from leadership there, and it is, that is really important for the, you know, Ralph Reader is really unique. I think we're the only food shelf, and then we talked about that, where a school district kind of owns it, and the community partnership to ensure that continues to happen is so important. So I just wanted to recognize the importance of those community contributions and really recognizing this as a community asset. So this is a time where those donations to food shelves are really important and critical. So love to hear that our student councils are doing their own food drives in the community and how much that really helps and supports. So everyone who's listening... So everyone who's listening, remember to support Ralph Reader this time during the holidays, especially with money, especially because they can really, the cash donations really make an impact for them because they can buy product at lower prices. Canned goods are always good, but money's really important, so.
Thank you. Any other school board member reports? Is there anything else to come before the board? We are adjourned.